So we're, we're gonna hold off for a few more minutes.
What is the potential to these, how big is the potential to that site? Is there selling to them?
Take the worst team and go to World Series and win. Actually, yeah. Maybe, maybe we could just. But even still, they had the best record. At least it stops fleeting.
Jack, I know they didn't have any.
Because otherwise this is gonna be on the bill. I mean, well, I mean, part of the problem was they thought some businesses. They all backed out. But I mean, yeah.
Let me call the meeting to order. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bob Bentley. I'm your town moderator. I'd like everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our departed servicemen and women as well as all who've served the town of Carver since our last meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to start off by making some introductions. I'd like to start off with the selectmen. To my far left, to your right, Selectman Helen Maroney, Selectman Dick Ward, Selectman Sarah Hewens, Selectman Jack Franny, our town council, Greg Corbo, our town administrator, Jim Purcell, and Selectman Chairman Mike O'Donnell. To my right, your left, we have Town Clerk Lynn Doyle, we have the town accountant, Meg Lemay, we have town treasure tax collector, Paula Newt, Capitol Outlay Chair, Ron Clark, and Finance Committee Chair, John Carter, and John will introduce his committee.
Sure. To my right, your left, we have Piggy Wood, Mark Walker, Joe Patton, and Andrew Cottorelli.
And I didn't mean to forget them. The school committee, Lance Kennedy is the chair. Lance, can you introduce your committee?
Sure will. To my right, I have Gina Hanlon Kavicki, we have Barry Stresky, Paula Kibbe, and Superintendent Sorel.
Thank you. The warrant for the town meeting is, was, has been posted on the website, and it's also out, was, a number of copies are out back. If you don't have one, I recommend that you go get one. There are a number of handouts that were out there also, and they will be referred to during the discussion, and they're available outside also. As I think most of you know, anyone who needs hearing assistance or a device is available for your use, and they're right up in the back of the auditorium. If you are not from Carver or are not registered to voting Carver, we ask that you sit in the back section of the auditorium, that's the upper section, and only registered Carver voters should be sitting in the front section. Brief overview of what I've said as my rules. Once an article has been made and seconded, the floor is open for discussions. You'll be able to speak on any article. I ask that each speaker can find their comments to no more than two times on the same article, and try to keep your comments to no more than three minutes per time. The maker of the motion is allowed more time if necessary, and clearly, if asked a question through the moderator, people will be allowed to speak more than twice. Questions should be directed through the moderator. Once you've spoken, in the interest of equal opportunity for debate, I will select anyone who has not spoken previously on an article before I will call on you again. I ask that you only speak through the moderator, stay on the topic of the article being discussed, and respect the differing opinions from your own. With those formalities out of the way, I, and the town clerk has indicated to me that we have a quorum, I call the special town meeting of the town of Carver to order. So, let's see, first article, first order of business is Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $30,295.89 is set forth in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman recommendation?
Selectman recommendation was five zero. Selectman recommendation was five zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Four zero to approve.
Is there any discussion? This is an unpaid bills article. For those who don't know, state law requires that there be a nine tenths vote to pay unpaid bills at special town meetings. Is there any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Moderator, we ask for an explanation of the Norfolk Ram group $28,000 expenditure. Seems like most of what Norfolk Ram does isn't things that are virgin in unexpected nature.
How's that? Thank you. Okay, so I'll repeat the question. The Norfolk Ram Group bill of $28,634.48, it seems that nothing that the Norfolk Ram Group does is unexpected in nature, and I'm wondering why this, this amount of money has come up as an unpaid bill.
Mr. Purcell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, many of the Norfolk Ram services that are associated with the monitoring of the landfill are indeed fixed, repetitive, sometimes on a twice-a-year basis, other times on a four-times-a-year basis. I think there has been perhaps a combination of underfunding, of cost creep, and I think also, quite frankly, we need better management of this, of this particular contract. Now, there have been instances, and there was one that happened just last week, where the EPA and consequently the State Department of Environmental Protection imposed new standards for mercury, things that had not been anticipated by us. It necessitates additional work. These are, you know, that's an example of some of the unexpected things that can, that can come up from time to time. That, that expense will likely be about $8,000, which we'll have to confront later on in the year. So while there are some things that are unexpected from time to time, I think that Norfolk Ram themselves, I don't mind saying it publicly, and I don't mind saying publicly that the town of Carver needs to have a better handle on, on the activities here. Where there are anticipated cost overruns, we ought to be reporting that on a regular basis so that we don't get caught by surprise. And I understand now that this is becoming a recurring theme, that these expenses come up on an annual basis, and it's time that, you know, that the town management and, and management of Norfolk Ram, you know, got more involved. Now, the services have been rendered. We are lawfully obliged to pay for them, you know, and I would urge favorable consideration on the article, but I would urge and plan on telling the new town administrator as part of my transition report to them that this is an area, this is a management area that they really need to harness. In fact, talking to the FinCom tonight, I talked about the importance of a relationship between the town administrator and the finance committee, as well as the board of selectmen, and I said, you know, there's no quicker way to gain their trust than to address an issue like this, you know, to harness what isn't but has, you know, has the appearance of being runaway costs.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? I should note that if you have a question or want to make a comment, if you can move to the, to any, any of the three microphones while, while the other speaker is speaking, that way I'll know that there are other people that want to speak. Otherwise, I'll move to end debate. Seeing no other movement to the mics, this again is a nine-tenths vote. If it's not a unanimous vote, we will take a hand count. All those in favor of Article One as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind Article Four of the June 3, 2013 annual town meeting and replace it as follows: to appropriate from estimated water receipts the amount of $391,127, and to transfer from free cash to sum of $100,000 for a total budget appropriation of $491,127.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman vote?
Selectman vote was five zero.
Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee vote, five zero to approve.
And we have our town accountant who's ready to give some explanation of the article.
At the June annual town meeting, the vote originally was to raise and appropriate $392,119, and to take from retained earnings $66,508. During fiscal 13, a budget was drawn up with, based on projected revenues and expenses. Their expenses were within budget. The projected revenues did not come in as expected, mainly due to, we were due an IRS subsidy which never came in, and then a customer that was supposed to have come onboard did not come onboard to the beginning of fiscal 14. So what ended up happening is there, they had a deficit, and the deficit also used up their retained earnings. So that vote to take $66,508 cannot exist because the retained earnings were not there. So really, this is just to clean up that vote, not use retained earnings, and to take it from raise and appropriate, and then another funding source was needed, and that's where the free cash comes in.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
I understand, but I've never actually heard it from anybody. It was a $25,000 tail bond that I'm told was paid, and I would like to find out what the procedure was that authorized the payment of that bond, who okayed it, was it the Water Commission, and why was that paid?
It was a $23,000, and it's called, it's called a callable bond. So when the debt was drawn up, the town knew that it was a callable bond. Callable means that the bank can call in the bond at any point, in which case the town owes the full principal at that point, whenever they call it in. And the financial advisors that the town has had warned the town that in fiscal 14 it may be called, but there was turnover in the town accountant's office, and so I don't think that that message was conveyed during the fiscal 14 process that beyond notice this could be called, and it was called at the beginning of the year. And so there's no recourse. Debt is one of the few expenditures where it doesn't have to go through the process of town meeting vote. It doesn't, it has to be paid. It is an absolute necessity.
So you're saying it was called by the bank?
Yes, it was.
When was that done?
It was, what, August? August 2013.
So it was called by the bank?
Yes.
Completely the bank's responsibility? Because there was no notice. I was on the commission until April, and there was no notice to the commission that this was gonna, this was gonna happen.
No, no, there was, no, because the individuals who probably would have known, the previous town administrator, maybe, I'm not sure, I can't speak to him, or the previous town accountant, were gone.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Can I make a comment? We've met on this particular article with regards to the North Carver Water District. We've met with water commissioners, we've met with the town accountant, as well as the town administrator. Looking forward, there's, there will be an increasingly repetitive draw on our general funds over the next, you know, five to 10 years. We definitely need some assistance. We need someone to give us some options with regards to what to do with this district going forward. The finance committee recommends that we use all access that we have to third-party information. I believe the Department Revenue Office services that will help us look at the North Carver Water District, their finances, and what we could possibly do going forward. We, the finance committee, also have a fund that was established at last year's annual town meeting to go out and bring in someone that's done this type of work before, and to give us some, some options, because right now this will seriously impact our operating budgets in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Cottorelli?
Andrew Cottorelli, 19 votes, point wrote. I'm echoing what Chairman Carter just said. The, our original vote on this at a meeting we had the other night, there were, there were a majority, a majority of us that, that didn't vote for this, that voted against it just because of the lack of funds, revenues coming in from the North Carver Water District compared to the expenditures. One of the commissioners was there, was there with us that night, and we actually revoted, we rescinded and revoted tonight for the good of the town because of the tax rate and the tax bills. We basically had, had to do it for the responsibility for the town and the town's good name to, to pay this bill. But I am not, as a resident, I'm not happy with the fact that we're, the North Carver Water District is becoming such a drain on the taxpayers, and I believe the, the, the people who are hooked up to it, I think there are only 55 businesses and households, or somewhere around there, that belong to this. I can only see their, their tax bills going up farther and farther, and it's not really fair to them. So I believe something needs to be done, as Chairman Carter said, to bring either, to give us some recommendations or to find some other way to fund this, this entity, this asset that we do have, because we can't get rid of it, we've already, you know, we're already obligated to it. So I urge people to vote for it, but I, I think that something needs to be done to bring more revenue in through the North Carver Water District, maybe through some large-scale water purchases or, you know, users we could sell water to.
Mr. Franny?
The Board of Selectmen received information from the town accountant that the next, for the next two fiscal years, the deficit's gonna be 250,000 a year, rising to 350,000. So I agree with the finance committee. We need someone in to tell us what's gonna be happening with this. But tonight, we really need to approve this because we need to get the tax bills out.
Mr. Johnson?
I wanted to make sure that, I echo what John said. The Department of Revenue Office is a service where, where they'll come in and, and review water districts and things like that, and we need to avail ourselves of every free service that we can get our hands on so that this doesn't fall anymore on the taxpayers than it already has. The, the burden of this district has fallen on the Water Commission for some time, and the unmet promises of the district are, are a fine example of what can happen when you don't set things up properly, you don't think far enough ahead of time, and you think with your hopes and not with your head. I, I don't criticize the district for what they've done. Everything they've done is, is been helpful in terms of mitigating the situation, the DECA situation, and a whole bunch of other things that they've done, but it hasn't been enough. So I would urge the, the town to take advantage of what John is asking for, get the Department of Revenue in here, see if they can help, but that shouldn't stop us from approving this article. As painful as it is, it's a lesson to all of us. There's only one person that sat in this room in December 2006 that voted against this, so the burden falls on each and every one of us for having approved something that was built on hope and not on pencil and piece of paper.
Seeing no further movement to the mics, the vote on Article Two is upon us. All those in favor of Article Two as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $2,820.12 to the transportation revolving account for the council on aging.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman recommendation?
Selectman recommendation was five zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommended five zero to approve.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no movement to the mics, all those in favor of Article Three as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the transfer set forth in the handout titled Article Four, Proposed Line Item Transfers to Meet Supplement Specific Line Items Appropriated at the June 3, 2013 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman's recommendation?
Selectman was four zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommendation, five zero to approve.
Any further discussion? It's on, on your yellow page. Seeing no further movement to the mics?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, can I just make one, one comment? With regards to these transfers, we've got some items on here that are really adjustments to 2014 fiscal operating budget. As many of you know, there was a lot of, there was a transition going on last year at annual town meeting, and some of these items just got overlooked. We would hope that in the future, that, that we would look at operating budgets to find any additional cost savings when we're so early into the fiscal year, and that any other requests for fiscal year operating budgets go through the reserve fund, with the finance committee reviewing the need for the expenditure. But because of the unique circumstances we found ourselves in at the June town meeting, we voted to approve these items. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Five.
Article Five, I move that the town vote to transfer from June 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article Number Three Line Item Employee Benefits, Clement County Retirement, to sum of $6,350 for the purposes stated in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman recommendation?
Selectman with five zero to approve.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing no movement. All those in favor of Article Five signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Six.
Article Six, I move that the town vote to transfer from Cranberry Village retained earnings to sum of $30,000 for the purposes stated in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman recommendation?
Selectman with five zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
And Capitol Outlay Committee recommendation?
Capitol Outlay voted, voted four zero to approve.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Rod Forrester, 13 Lincoln Circle, Cranberry Village. I have a question. Is this money coming out of our enterprise fund?
Yes.
It is. Okay. The other question is concerning Cranberry Village water. We've been promised for some time, going back to previous administrations, that after a certain date, the town would be looking diligently to expand the system to other users so Cranberry Village would not be the only customer on the well, because the things fall on us, you know, and it's only so many people, and it's getting more and more expensive. We are working diligently, certainly, to fix leaks and so forth, so bill will go down, but would like it to go down farther. Can anybody answer that, or is there anything in the, the plans for expanding the well? Oh, you can help?
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much.
Jack Carter, Director of Planning. We've been continuously meeting with the DECA's company, and, and as you heard from Mr. Johnson, the Water District is now helping them with some of their water issues. Right now, they're just not in the financial situation to make this whole thing work, to bring water to DECA's, which would then expand the system, as Mr. Forrester said. He is right that the grant that improved that well, the cap or, or the limitations on that grant have now been lifted, and we can sell water to anyone. Unfortunately, there's no pipe between the well and Cranberry Village that goes to anybody else's houses to sell to. So right now, I think until the DECA's, who would be the end user, is ready to move financially, it, it doesn't look that anything in the immediate future will be able to expand to.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no movement to the mics?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, sorry. I think we, this article's written as a $25,000 cost. I thought there was an adjustment to 30. Is that correct?
I think the motion said 30.
Oh, that was in the motion. Sorry, sorry.
So, the article is written, Article Six. It's time to take a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $5,000 for the purposes stated in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectman recommendation?
Selectman recommendation was five zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommendation was zero five. Do not approve.
Any, any further discussion?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We, when we reviewed this Article Seven, it looked like there was actually an, at the annual town meeting, there was actually an appropriation for $2,800 towards this particular item, but after talking with the town accountant, I guess this was something that might have gotten overlooked. That's why the finance committee, the finance committee voted against this particular article because we were under the impression that it was a duplicate of an article that was at the annual town meeting. But after talking to the town accountant, we realized that the annual town meeting overlooked this, this, this $2,800 budget item for the water tank. That was the reason for our vote. We were unclear as to whether it was already accounted for in annual town meeting.
Okay. Mr. O'Donnell?
Just a matter of general information, this is actually a reduction from the original article that was proposed, so we are saving a few hundred dollars on this.
Any further discussion? Article Seven, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Eight.
Article Eight, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $4,000 for the purposes stated in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectmen recommendation?
Selectmen recommendation was four zero.
And Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
Any further discussion? You could step the microphone and identify yourself and give your address.
Rich Kaiser, Middlebrook Way.
There's an on off switch on the microphone.
Now?
Yep.
Okay.
Could you state your name again?
Rich Kaiser, Middlebrook Way. It says here forty eight hundred dollars.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
It says here forty eight hundred dollars. And you just mentioned four thousand. Is there a reduction here for some reason?
Yes, sir, this is another reduction.
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're saving a couple hundred dollars more. This was based on revised estimates from our building and ground superintendent, I believe.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Eight signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Nine.
Article Nine, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N.
Motion's made and seconded. Selectmen recommendation?
Selectmen were five zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
Board of Assessors recommendation?
Board of Assessors recommended three zero.
Ms. Blanchard, do you want to?
May I?
Speak this?
We should have done this probably a while ago. It was only became available last year, but we need to allow our veterans to do the same as the senior work-off program. We need to be able to let them work for $600 worth of taxes, well, it comes off their taxes. And since yesterday was Veterans Day, and I want to thank all the veterans in this room who have served, and we need to take care of our veterans and our seniors, and the assessors are trying to do their best as far as we are allowed to by law, and hopefully the rest of the townspeople will agree.
Mr. Belbin.
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. I just want to make it clear, this is going to be no age requirement for, in order to do this? There's no age limit?
No, there's no age requirement. You do have to own the property.
Okay. And is it just wartime veterans, or is it any veteran?
Would you like me to read from the definition of the veterans, Mass General Law, Chapter Seven, Section Six, Clause 43, has a definition of all of the veterans and the, or 43rd, I should say. Spanish war veteran, World War I, World War II, Korea, Korean Emergency, Vietnam, Grenada, Lebanese Peacekeeping Force, Panamanian Intervention, Persian Gulf, any whacks. And all that you need, there are requirements. The requirement is that if you only served 90 days, and there are waivers for some of the 90-day veterans and some who served only 180 days, and I don't mean only, it's just a different amount, but the veteran, and you have to be honorably discharged.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Nine as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I motion withdraw Article Ten from the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded to withdraw. I'm not sure that I need to take a, sure, Selectmen recommendation?
Five zero.
Did Finance Committee make any recommendations? Motion's to withdraw. All those in favor of withdrawing Article Ten signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Eleven.
Article Eleven, Mr. Moderator, the same. I make a motion to withdraw.
Motion's made and seconded. Selectmen's recommendation?
Five zero.
And Finance Committee. All those in favor of withdrawing Article Eleven signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Twelve.
Article Twelve, I move that the town vote to transfer from the tax collector for purposes of sale and auction in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15, and who authorize the board of selectmen to convey on terms and conditions as determined by the board of selectmen to be in the best interest of the town, an interest in the possesive land identified on the town assessors' maps as Map 62, Lot 167, but also known as Four Oak Drive, Carver, Massachusetts, including all landing buildings thereon.
Motion's been made and seconded. Selectmen's recommendation?
Five zero, Mr. Moderator.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
Any further discussion? This is a land, land taking, therefore it requires a two-thirds vote. If we don't have unanimous vote, we will take a hand count. All those in favor of Article Twelve signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article Thirteen.
Article Thirteen, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $8,750,000 for the purposes of contracting architectural services, hiring a project manager, bidding assistance and counsel, construction and other items necessary for the design and complete construction of a new central fire station training facility to be located at 99 Main Street, and as funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow said sum pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Fire Station Building Committee and Board of Selectmen.
Motion's been made and seconded. Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen were four one.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Five zero to approve.
Town Building Study Committee recommendation?
Four zero to approve.
And we've had a request for, oh, sorry, Capital Outlay. I had you down wrong.
Capital Outlay voted to approve, five zero.
And we've had a request for a few, for the proponents of the article to make a few presentations. One in particular is from the Collins Center, which is out of UMass Boston. The Collins Center presenter is not from the town of Carver, and assuming I don't see any objection to the Collins Center making a presentation, I'll accept her to present. Is there any objection? Then first, Fire Chief is asked to speak a little bit about where we stand now.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Good evening. I am Fire Chief Craig Weston, 17 Meadow Street. Amazingly, it was seven years ago that I stood in this exact same spot, asking for your support in rebuilding our public safety buildings. Boy, I hope it goes better tonight than it did then. I realize that some of you may have lived here your whole life, and some of you are new to this community, so I thought it only fair by starting the presentation tonight by explaining to where we've come from and how we got here, and asking your support on Article, the article tonight. In 1998, Fire Chief Dana Harriman, one of my mentors, recognized the need for a new central fire station, and a modern central fire station that would meet the needs of our call firefighting system in order to move us forward. He studied that concept. A small study was done at that time to look at those needs, and that study concluded that in fact we did need a new central fire station and also a new police station. But it was not funded due to the financial climate of that time. Although the project never got off the ground through no lack of hard work from Chief Harriman, we took a lot of that work and we're using it to this present day. At that time, we were quickly running out of space for our fire department. We were parking larger emergency vehicles, trying to fit them in a smaller space. We needed equipment, and our changing mission of the fire department was coming at us. From then until 2006, the increased need of a new central fire station, a new training facility, and also a new police station was coming front and center. And at that time, it was brought forward to the town again. At that time, the board of selectmen formed what we called the Police and Fire Building Study Committee to undertake that project. That committee comprised of members of the board of selectmen, members of the Capital Outlay, townspeople, the police chief at that time, and myself. For a year and a half, that committee met, and we met extensively, touring facilities, touring town-owned properties, meeting with consultants. The town meeting concluded at that time that in fact a new central fire station, a new training facility, and in fact a new police station were in fact needed, in desperate need. The committee studied document, and documented locations on where those buildings could go. The logistics for keeping both departments in service while construction happened, and also cost estimates that would occur. The committee concluded that the central fire station would be located, best fit location would be at 99 Main Street, our current training facility location, with a new training facility built into the rear. The fire department would move to that location. A new police station would be built in the location of the current central fire station, closer to Route 58. After, in 2007, it was estimated that that cost be about $13.5 million. That plan would give both facilities the frontage they needed on a major roadway, access for emergency vehicles to both exit, and for firefighters to both enter. It would also ensure that public safety department stayed in service while construction occurred. This was endorsed by the current board of selectmen at that time, the current Capital Outlay Committee, and both the police chief and myself. With that said, in town, in 2007, town meeting approved an article asking voters to try to approve a debt exclusion to move forward with the construction of a fire station. However, that project was ultimately turned down at the ballot box. The message at that time was that people agreed with the project, but at that time they could not fund it. Although I was very disappointed, I did and I continue to understand why that was voted down. I can vividly remember the disappointment on my face, the committee's face, when the project was voted down. But I stated many, many times in public that your message was heard loud and clear, and we respected that vote, with the committee honoring and respecting that vote. So what do we do now? During that time period, your building committee went back to work. We sent, we sent out a small survey. Only a few people answered it, but we made our best effort. Most people approved the project but wanted to revisit it in five years. Well, that was, that was seven years ago. Most felt they would support it if we could find a funding source that would ease the burden on taxpayers. I think we have found that funds, that source. Again, we listened, and we respected that input. We did not force the issue. We did not revoke the issue. We listened, and we went to work. In 2008, the building committee submitted an article to this body asking for $13,000 to go hire a professional architecture firm to try to do an official needs assessment, a cost analysis, a site plan, and to guide us on how we could move the project forward reasonably and frugally. This body approved that $13,000, and we put it to good use. The money was well spent, and it allowed us to hire an architectural firm called the Reinhardt Associates, a professional architect. They developed site plans, preliminary, conducted space needs, cost analysis for the police station, a new fire station, and a training facility. These plans were used for us to apply for two large grants. Although we were denied, we also used the plans to make many modifications in the layout of the stations. So again, we've saved money to get to this point. However, in 2010, we exhausted the resources of the committee, and our needs are even greater. We're packing valuable equipment outside. We're designing new apparatus to fit inside a 1957 building that was not necessarily designed to do the job for the next 20 years. We've relocated items high up on custom-built shelves in every nook and cranny, and we're reaching a critical level where detrimental impacts could start affecting our fire service. With that said, the town went and agreed to create the new Town Building Study Committee, who will speak to you very shortly, with their goal to look at ways to fund the needed projects, with the emphasis on the police and fire stations, possibly under the levy limit, meaning no impact in your taxes. And again, those people are here tonight. Additionally, and to date, in order to get an independent validation of the project, taking politics, taking potential cynicism, and one-sided point of views out of contaminating the validity of the project and the funding mechanism, the board of selectmen appropriated approximately $10,000 to hire an outside consultant to do yet another study, to see if there was a need for a fire station, a police station, and a training facility, and to validate the funding source that was going to pay for it. After a two-month study, the town hired the Collins Center, a very reputable firm, and they're here tonight and will do a presentation for you. They released their findings early last week. That's about as brief as I can be as where we've come from since 1998, now almost 15 years later, if you can imagine. I believe that we listened. I believe we went to work. We came up with a very well-thought-out plan, and now I think it's going to be verified, the funding mechanisms, again, by the Collins Center. We did exactly as the taxpayers asked us to do, we're trying to find a way to fund this project without impacting your taxes. We honored and respected that vote in 2007. Through you, Mr. Moderator, if I could turn it over to the Town Building Study Committee.
Mr. Ryan.
My name's Dan Ryan. I'm the chairman of the Town Building Study Committee, and the members of the committee are Steve Pratt, Roger Shores, and Paul Duff. And we were established in 2010 by the board of selectmen to take a look at all the building projects. And as you recall, this is going back in time here. This was what we actually, I took a couple of slides from our April 2011 town meeting, just to refresh your memories. So the Town Building Study Committee was put together, and it was directed by the board of selectmen to identify all possible funding options, and these slides, again, are from 2011. I'm just repeating them, and they're still relevant for today. So for all possible funding options for building projects, and determine the impact of those options on both the town of Carver, taxpayers, and operating budgets. And the building projects that we were primarily focused on back in 2011 were the elementary school building, the primary school, the central fire station, and police station. In addition, we continued to look at the middle high school and all other municipal buildings as part of our plan. So our goal was to identify sustainable and repeatable funds for these projects, minimize the impact to taxpayer. That's always been our number-one goal. You've probably seen in the past all the creative ways we've tried to come up with ways to fund these projects to minimize the impact to the taxpayer, and to consider future impact to operating budgets, strive to maintain a stable tax rate, and develop a plan to use funds for renovation or replacement, new life in buildings versus the dollars that we're spending on the maintenance today of buildings that have gone beyond their useful life, in other words, what we considered wasted dollars. So at the time, we had looked at a bunch of available funding options to include, of course, we need to get a grant, as we mentioned, for the school project, which we've been working in the past with the MSBA, and we're back into that process again, and we'll continue to do that. We also had come up with the idea of looking at personal property new growth, and I'm going to show you how that worked out for us. This was back in 2011, we were proposing it. And then other available funds. And then other available funds, et cetera. And all this was just balancing. We're trying to balance the operating budgets with the building projects. I think it was recognized by the town that, you know, we needed to save to do the building projects, and we needed to also figure out how to do the building projects, because if we spend all the money on the operating budgets or all the other budget, we don't put anything aside for the building projects, then in time, they're going to become an issue, and they already are with the maintenance costs that we're putting into it. So we realized back in 2011, we have to find a way to save for these buildings. So what we proposed in 2011 was to establish a capital building stabilization fund. So this was a stabilization fund or savings account, just for the buildings themselves. And so at the time, this is how we were going to propose, that we do the police and fire station, and then after we finish those projects, go on to do other projects. So the good news is that when we established this fund in 2011, you, the town meeting, the taxpayers of Carver, actually supported us. So since 2011, we've been putting money into our so-called savings account for these building projects, and now we've gotten to the point, according to our plan, where the funds have built up to where we can do these projects. We can start one of the building projects, and we're proposing the fire station, which you'll hear later why. And we can do that within the levy limits. In other words, we don't have to raise taxes just to fund these projects, which I think is the good news. So we're working hard to do the police, the fire, and other building-type needs within the levy limit and not have to raise taxes. So as part of our effort, and because we were looking at multiple projects to get started, the Town Building Study Committee requested through the Board of Selectmen that an independent study be done with respect to the need of the buildings, the site planning, and the funding. So we were fortunate to get the backing of the Redevelopment Authority, who funded the project, and was able to allow us to contract with the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management, whose role is to support towns like ourselves in looking at the need and the site planning and also the funding. So as requested, the Collins Center completed their study of the fire and police facilities at this time in time for town meeting, and they're continuing on to take a look at the school project after this. So with that, I'd like to pass this off to the Collins Center.
If we can have the representative from the Collins Center.
Good evening, everyone. While we're getting set up, my name is Monica Lamboy. I'm with the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Our center was created about five and a half years ago now by the Commonwealth to help towns and cities such as yourselves grapple with the kinds of stuff we saw on the agenda today, looking at resources, looking at facilities challenges. We help with executive recruitment. We help look at departments that may be having challenges that need an action plan. So we do a lot of different things, and we come out of the public sector. As part of the University of Massachusetts, we are part of the state. We are not a private firm. We are still a public entity. I'm here tonight with my colleague, Tony Teresi, and we are both very pleased and thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this important project. So I'll start by letting you know what we did. First, we looked at the many years of work that had already been done, that the chief spoke about, that the Building Studies Committee had done. We interviewed important people, such as the treasurer, your financial advisor, and reviewed lots of documentation. That includes the building plans. That includes the documentation of the issues in the buildings themselves, as well as touring the fire station, the police station, and the sites that have been considered. So we were quite thorough, and we also contacted some other officials, as I will mention as we go along. So we broke the report into two basic halves, as we relate to the public safety facilities. One is about the siting, the need and where the facilities should be located, or would be best optimally located. And then, second, the funding plan. So we're going to break up our presentation along those lines and offer some recommendations as well as you move forward. The plan as described before was to build a new fire station and a training facility at 99 Main Street, where the current training facilities are located. And then the front of the existing building, which is where the fire station is right now, would be demolished, built into a new police station, and then the back part of the building would be renovated for the police. What this means is there are no interim locations. As a new building is built, then the department would move in, and then the renovation would start. So there's no need for an interim location. On the siting issues, what we did find was that the current facilities are quite old, 1957 for the front part of the fire station, with an addition in 1978 for the police station and additional bays. And they really did not anticipate the changes that we have today, both in equipment, in apparatus, and they really don't meet the needs of a department. The technology today is dramatically different than it was then. If you think about the fire station, there's really two major components. There are the bays where the apparatus are, the trucks and the various equipment, and then there's the station itself, where the dispatcher is, where the chiefs sit, where there are meeting rooms and such. Both of those really are not meeting the needs today of the department. As the chief mentioned, the bays are quite small. Our trucks, not surprisingly, have gotten larger. We have more specialized fire equipment than we have. We have important protective equipment for our firefighters that need to be stored properly, need to be cleaned on returning to the department. That all happens largely in the bay area, and it doesn't meet their needs. When you move into the station itself, in addition to having a dispatch area and offices, there are actually spaces for people to sleep. And one thing that's very new or very different from 1957 is we have mixed-gender fire departments all over the country. So there need to be facilities for women, and this department does not really have adequate space for women. There's one shower in the entire building, in the central fire station. So if somebody, if a whole crew comes back, they've got to take turns using that shower in the bathroom. The sleeping area is also just a few bunk beds. It's not even enough beds, I think, for a crew, is what I understand. And importantly, with the type of department that you have, training is vitally important. And opportunities for the crews to get together, for the entire department to get together, to have training is really important. If you think about full-time fire departments, those folks are working 24 hours a day on shifts, and they're together all the time. So there is opportunity to talk about policy and protocol when somebody is on shift. Here, because the firefighters are on call, they have to be brought in to have training, and it's efficient to be able to bring everybody together. And right now, the room where they meet doesn't even fit the entire force. So what I understand is that when there's a large meeting, people are sitting out in the hall, people are sitting in the kitchen, yet trying to get the information, the vitally important information that they need to understand about policies and training. Separate from the station itself, there's also the Training Center. The Training Center was new to me, so I contacted the state fire marshal to ask his opinion about the fire Training Center and its significance to Carver. And he was very enthusiastic and spoke very eloquently about the fact that there's some training that can happen in a classroom, but our firefighters, to be fully equipped, need to go out and experience the kinds of conditions that they would experience out in the field. And that's what the Training Center offers. They are able to go in smoke and in dark and under conditions that replicate all the what would happen, and also to be able to burn. So he thought that the Training Center really made sure that Carver's force was incredibly well-trained. He also thought it was really, I think, an aspect of pride for the department, that other cities and towns come here to do their training and use the facilities. And in an environment where cities and towns share an emergency, those relationships that are built between the town of Carver and your neighbors are vitally important. Moving into the police station, we found that the police station is substandard, and the building is really poorly maintained. This gets into a lot of different areas. The evidence storage is inadequate, the weapons storage, where they have their records. There is no Sally Port, which is basically the ability to drive a police car into a building, so that when you have a prisoner, you actually open the car door, and you're inside the building, and the garage door has come down, so there's no opportunity for them to escape. In Carver, they're actually letting the prisoners out in the parking lot and walking them into the building. So that could be a problem on a number of areas, and it's a very public space, the parking area that's out back there. The shower and locker room facilities are really inadequate, and the building is just not well-air-conditioned. Oh, I wanted to particularly mention technology. The town has really wisely invested in some really important technology, your radio equipment, your computer equipment. But unfortunately, it's not being stored in conditions that are conducive to maintaining the lifetime of that equipment. Most of us, you know, who work in office buildings, there's a server room, which is heavily air-conditioned, so that the heat from the equipment doesn't build up, so that they get damaged. Right now, some of the fire equipment is in the chief's cabinet in his office, so he has to open the cabinet doors to let some of the heat out. And the radio equipment is in the tower, where when it rains, because the roof leaks, they have to throw a tarp over the radio equipment. You don't want your radio going out. And in the police station, they basically have put the computer equipment in a closet that you would normally use for paper, pens, et cetera, and the heat builds up very intensely. The day that I visited, it was very, very hot in there, and there's no air conditioning. So you invested in equipment, but it's not being maintained in a way to maintain the lifetime of that equipment. Also, ADA compliance is really non-existent in the building. So that has to do with the building conditions, that basically both of the buildings really are not, it's one building, but both of the stations are not up to current standard. So then, looking at where they could locate, 99 Main Street, 112 Main Street, and we also looked at a list of parcels that the town owns to see if there was any other sites that hadn't yet been considered. So if you look at the current station, I tried to see if the current location would fit for the fire department, and came to realize that if you were going to use the existing location, which is between Town Hall and the storage and the EMS and the fields in the back, that literally everything would have to be removed to build the new fire station. And if you remember, I said earlier that the plan right now doesn't mean anybody has to have an interim location. If you were to try to fit the fire station on the current site by itself and meet all of its needs, you would have to literally remove everybody, remove all the buildings, rebuild a new building, and then move people back in, which would mean you would be basically outfitting two sites for no reason. So 112 Main Street for the fire station did not make sense. The property, which I'm calling the Center Street property, which is part of where the library is, there's a library and the play equipment, the Doby property? Robey property, thank you. We went out on that site. It's a very large site. It's wooded, it's quite nice. But it's heavily constrained by the wells that are there. The town well is on that property, and an active well has to have a 250-foot radius around it where there's no building, there's no construction. There are also two emergency wells there that are not in use right now, but if there is an occasion, you need to be able to turn them on, so those also have to be protected. Then there's an even larger radius, which I think was 750 or 760 feet, where you shouldn't have any kinds of contaminants, any kinds of oils, or anything that could go down into the water table, because everything that's at the surface when it rains slowly makes it way through the soil. So that site is very constrained in terms of where you could actually put a building, and a building of the size that we're talking about. In addition, the road curves more or less where you would want to exit for any kind of station. And if you think of the emergency vehicles that need to get out there quickly, you really want to have a good, clean sightline, or put up potentially more than one light, so that people are stopping far away from the station, which would add to the cost and could create safety conditions just by the vehicles leaving. Then we looked at a number of other town sites, which were either very wet, it's very wet in Carver, or had beautiful parks on it, or were not really on the north-south access, which makes sure that you can get anywhere in town very quickly. So in conclusion, we did find that the siting proposal did make sense, that the Building Studies Committee had come up with. And we did want to offer a few recommendations. In terms of design, as you move into the next stage, in the proposed fire station, there are two public, two large spaces for training, one of which is to be available to the general public. That space is very nice, but it may not necessarily be required for the station. So as you move forward and think about it, and you want to make sure your design is as efficient as, cost-effective, that would be a space to look at. We'd also want you to make sure that the bedrooms and the bathrooms for the firefighters really offered the maximum privacy for them, since they may be there at off-hours late in the evening. And the police department's building, which is a little bit further out, is built for the future. They're really trying to build it 40, 50 years in the future and project forward your police staffing needs. So that's an important public discussion about how your department is going to grow, and how many officers you see out in the future. And then, we did want to suggest that if the fire station is built first, which does seem to make the most sense, that perhaps some modest improvements could be made to the police station right now, including the air conditioning in the server room, and perhaps just some comfort, things that would be modest in nature, but would make it a little bit more bearable to be in that building. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tony Teresi, who's going to discuss the financial
My name is Tony Teresi, as Monica mentioned. I am an associate with the Collins Center. As she mentioned, the project was really divided into two pieces. Monica dealt with the siting and the construction aspects of the police and fire station, and the other task was to deal with the funding issue. And I think the main question that the Town Building Study Committee presented to us at the beginning of our project was, is it possible to fund the fire station and the police station within the tax levy limit? In other words, without the separate debt exclusion vote. Before I get into the funding background, as part of that task, they requested an independent review of the funding plan model that was prepared by the Town Buildings Study Committee. In effect, we took that funding plan, which has a number of components, and basically dissected that and rebuilt it. And the goal was to verify both the accuracy of the numbers that they were dealing with and the steps involved if it were to be followed through. So in summary of the cost estimates, as you'll see, tonight, you're dealing with the fire station, fire Training Center. The police station is in the out-years. That, in terms of the study, we used a fiscal 2017. That's not the subject of the vote tonight, however, but it is part of the complete report and part of the funding plan that was put together by the Town Building Study Committee. A big piece of the funding proposal, that is probably an addition from what you had heard in previous years, there is a drop-off of existing debt for the Town Hall and Library that will free up in excess of $250,000 by 2017. That recommendation would be, because that was a capital investment, that drop-off in debt then becomes part of what I would consider an asset to be applied to other capital projects. You would not want to take away something that was invested in capital projects and use it for other purposes. So that one serious component, major component of their plan, is to utilize a drop-off in that debt service. And I must commend both the elected officials and town meeting for the foresight in establishing a stabilization fund. It's really quite an achievement. That was started in 2011, and that initial amount and the growing amount is really the key component in setting aside money to pay for large capital projects within the tax levy limit, because those funds that were put into the stabilization account, and I believe it was $400,000 at this last town meeting, is from the existing tax levy. So basically, the- So basically, the, the funding plan that is proposed by the Town Buildings Committee that we reviewed consists of, of three funding pieces. First is the $400,000 appropriation to the Capital Building Stabilization Fund. That you have already built into the base. Your town meeting vote this past June appropriated the $400,000. It's in the base. The recommendation is that $400,000 continually be appropriated, and it increases at two-and-a-half percent a year, which is the, the, the proposition, two-and-a-half allowable increase. The second piece of that is the, as, as the chairman of the Town Building Study Committee mentioned, it was the personal property tax growth. We've, 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 in order to analyze that, we looked at total new growth taxes and, and wanted to get a sense that the amount that was coming from personal property taxes was a, a realistic amount that didn't, did not deplete the amount of new taxes that can be used for other general operating purposes. And, and as part of the plan, there's a, a certain amount of personal property taxes, roughly $58,000 in the first year, out of an average of, I think the town is averaging somewhere of close to $300,000 a year, so it's a, it's just a small amount of that new growth taxes. So to, to, to kind of fill in the, the, the numbers gaps, which I'm sure will bore you, the, the Capital Building Stabilization Fund, as of July 1st, 2013, has $580,000 in it, and that's, and that's, that's prior to any investment income. When communities set up stabilization funds, that money is treated as a bank account. The interest accrues and adds to the fund. So this, this, the analysis that we've done and, and I believe the analysis that the Buildings Committee, I'm not sure if they include interest, but that would be over and above, so that's an additional benefit, the interest that would accrue. I've just simply dealt with the appropriations. Again, I mentioned the allocation of, of new growth taxes, the $55,000. The Town Hall/Library debt drops, it's, in this current year, it's $278,000. By fiscal 18, it'll be zero. So in effect, that money has been reduced from the budget. The recommendation is that money, although be reduced from the budget, stays within capital projects. We've, we've worked closely with the town's financial advisor, Unibank, and the town treasurer on preparing one example of, of, of debt service schedules. And in the example that, that we utilized, the financial advisor prepared a 25-year debt schedule. Useful life of 25 years is, is certainly very reasonable for a police and fire station construction. At the peak of that debt, the debt service for the project, depending upon the, the method of issuing the debt, would be between 1.1 million and 1.3 million. The reason that number's important is the town would want to have money available in the Capital Building Stabilization Fund, which has been established for the purpose of paying debt service. So that debt service schedule and the, and the timing would be developing consultation with administration management, the architect, when the bids go out, the town treasurer and the fiscal advisor. So the example that we've used is simply that, simply an example, but it's a base example. I think it's reasonable to give a kind of a general view of what the project would cost. And, and finally, the, the, you'd have to recognize that the Capital Building Stabilization Fund would need both appropriations to and appropriations from. In other words, town meeting would have to vote money into the Capital Stabilization Fund and appropriate monies out of the Capital, Capital Stabilization Fund to pay for debt service costs associated with these two projects. So what, what would we be recommending for, for town meetings? Based upon the, the funding plan that the Building Committee put together in our review of that, we would suggest that, that the fiscal 2015 annual town meeting appropriates approximately $468,800 to the Capital Building Stabilization Fund. Then future town meetings would increase the appropriations to the Capital Building Stabilization Fund based upon the funding model. In other words, the $400,000 increased by the two-and-a-half percent, the new growth taxes added to the base, and the drop-off in the library debt, those three components. And then, as I mentioned, future town meetings, when they require, you require a two-thirds vote to appropriate money to it, you'd also require a two-thirds vote to appropriate money from it. So town meetings are the final decision-making authorities. So each, each year would be an important decision for town meetings to make. One town meeting cannot bind another town meeting on appropriations. Monica, would you like? Well, the conclusion of, of the Collins Center, as Monica mentioned, is that the siting plan for fire and police facilities represents the best option available to meet department needs. And on the funding plan, we find that the debt service could be covered via the proposed funding strategy while maintaining conservative capacity for other operating budget needs. Thank you very much, and turn the microphone back over to the moderator.
And Mr. Chief Weston has a few concluding comments.
Sir, I'll be, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to conclude by reminding people that I think this project has been very well-vetted, and I know there'll be questions and I'll be glad to answer them. But it was endorsed by the Capital Outlet Committee by a vote of 5-0, by your Board of Selectmen by a vote of 4-1, by the Town, Town Building Study Committee by a vote of 4-0, by your Finance Committee by a vote of 5-0. It has been supported by the School Department, supported by both the Police Chief and myself, and now verified by the Collins Center, and hopefully supported by this community. This need has been established for the last 15 years. The town supported and established a financial plan, plan and funding mechanism three years ago, and they put the needed money into this Capital Building Stabilization Plan. The fund is built to a level that it will establish one building project at this time, and it will support additional future building projects, projects, a police station, school roofs, school septic systems, et cetera, in the very near future. It has been now re-verified by yet another study, and most importantly, we can do this without impacting the taxes. I don't know what more could have been done, and I don't know what more anyone could ask for. I finally ask for your support in the plan established three years ago and support this article and allow us to move forward in the construction of a new fire station headquarters and a training facility. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I want to apologize to the body for the length of the presentations, but I feel that it was important for the entire body to hear the presentations as made so that you can actually make a informed decision. At this point, I'll open the floor to discussion. Mr. Belvin.
Robert Belvin, 26 Gay Street. Chief, there's only one thing that we have to add to this, is I thoroughly support this. I want to thank the Building Study Committee for doing an outstanding job. To everyone on the boards that have helped this project go forward, the Fire Department, the Police Department, I mean, this couldn't be asked anything more. And I think the showing in here, although it's small of the town, people that aren't here approve this. So thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson.
I don't have any problem with what either Chief Weston or Chief Dufulley is putting forward in terms of the buildings. I do find the approach to this article wanting, and I have a problem in the total management of the assets of this town going forward. I could build six of these projects for what the school's going to be costing us. I haven't heard anything tonight about what the tax impact of that school is going to be on the taxpayers. We can't pull the wool over people's eyes and say there's not going to be a tax increase for the building projects that we're looking at. There is. I could build six, six, for what the school's going to cost us. I could build another six for what our unfunded pension and healthcare liabilities are going to cost us. What could go wrong nationally? We've got a healthcare system that everybody was promised that they could keep their present plan. Now they find out that they can't. In 2006, we sat right here in this room, and we were promised that that water system would cost us no more than $500,000, worst case. It's going to cost us $500,000 over the next two years. That's the penalty you pay when the detailed work that's gone into something isn't right. And when people vote with their hearts, not with their heads, the right way to proceed on this project is to look at all those projects as a group and find out if we can afford them. What's the tax increase going to be for the schools? How much? Is it going to be 10%? Probably more like someplace between 10 and 20%? What about the unfunded pension and healthcare liabilities?
Mr. Johnson, I think you, you're drifting off the, off the article itself.
No, I'm talking about the total funding and the impact of the taxpayers of the building projects. That's what we were told. I just sat here through a, a long talk about the benefits of the program. As a taxpayer, I want to hear what the costs are from my end of it, because I don't think we're being honest with the taxpayers. We've got a lot of big-ticket items out here that we're not planning for. What can go wrong? Well, two-thirds vote to take money in and out of the project. That's a big hurdle to get through if somebody sticks up and decides to throw a monkey wrench into it. Are you willing to fund those annual debt service payments out of your operating budgets? I'd like to hear yes or no on that. I, I think the answer will be no, if it doesn't happen. You've got to be careful about how these things are planned out and how we move forward. We can't move forward based on hope and optimism. They're nice things. I support the Police Department. I support the Fire Department, two of the greatest departments we have, but I got to support us as taxpayers too. And I got to stand up here and ask for somebody to be honest about the total impact of what it's going to be. I still haven't heard what that school is going to cost us. I'll bet it's going to be in the neighborhood of $50 million. What's that mean to me as a taxpayer? I want to hear that tonight. And Mr. Moderator, I would like, at the conclusion of this article and before it's adjourned, I would like to be recognized before there's a motion to adjourn for a brief comment.
Mr. Franny.
I voted against this project primarily because of the funding mechanism. I served on Police and Fire Station Building Committee, and when we brought it forward to seek the $500,000 to do our schematic design, and we thought we were going to win because it was already a debt, a debt exclusion that was in place, and we just wanted to extend it a couple of years, but we lost. My concern here is the funding mechanism. We're going to, we're going to have a warrant article for two-thirds vote to go into the stabilization fund, two-thirds vote to come out of it. Generally, when you fund something, it goes on the debt schedule and becomes part of your line item budgets. This way here, with the two-thirds in and the two-thirds out, we don't know who's going to be here 10 years from now and vote that in and not vote it in. That's my primarily concern. When you look at what happened with the Water District, we saw a beautiful presentation that said the big, the so-called Big Three were going to give us three-quarters of a million dollars apiece, and like Paul said, it was only going to cost us a half a million dollars. Well, that didn't materialize. We ended up borrowing $5.2 million to build the Water Service for a handful of taxpayers, and we're going to have a, a deficit of $250,000 a year for the next several years. I don't want to see that happen with this funding. My concern here is I want to see a commitment of the funds to pay for this debt, not to roll the dice with this two-thirds mechanism that we have in place.
Ms. Forrester.
Thank you. Jane Forrest, 13 Lincoln Circle, Cranbury Village. Thank you. Thank you. I sat here through everything that was said tonight. Did I understand it all? No, I have to be honest, I didn't. I was also here several years ago when the chief got up and asked for the same thing we're asking tonight. We're several years down the road now, and we still haven't gotten the fire station. We still haven't gotten the police station. We still have the greatest fire department and the greatest police station in any town anywhere as far as I'm concerned. Sometimes you just have to take a little bit of leap of faith and see some light at the end of the tunnel. You have professionals that are working in an unprofessional environment, totally. I've been in both buildings. To be honest with you, I wouldn't want to work in the police station. The air quality in there stinks. And as far as the fire department, you're just climbing all over each other. They're doing a great job with nothing to work with. Please, let's give them what they need to maintain our professional fire and, and police department. Thank you.
Mr. Pratt.
Stephen Pratt, 16 Weston Street, Vice Chairman of the Town Building Study Committee. Mr. Franny is absolutely right. We have no idea from year to year who's going to show up at town meeting. But the town meeting members that are here tonight are here for a chance to vote, to move forward on a project, what we've talked about for 15 years. And while we don't know who's going to be here from one town meeting to the next, the last three town meetings over the last three years, town meeting members have supported the Capital Building Stabilization Fund. Whether or not you're here for all three of them, or one of them, or none of them, each town meeting members supported it. And all we're asking to you tonight is to go back to April of 2011, when we first presented the idea of funding the, the public safety buildings initially and other capital projects in the future to, to use the Capital Building Stabilization Fund within the levy limit. We know we need to address the elementary school project, and that's what the Collins Center is going to be doing starting this week. That's what the, the School Committee and the Superintendent have been doing for the last seven years, and they're working with the MSBA, and we're back with them again to find out what the state is willing to do. Give us an opportunity to let that process occur, but tonight, please give us an opportunity to start the fire station as we proposed two and a half years ago. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no movement to the mics, I'll, we'll go to a vote. This is, this requires a two-thirds vote since it's a, a borrowing article, and if we don't have a unanimous vote, I will take a hand count. All those in favor of Article 13 as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The chair is in doubt. All those in favor of the Article 13 as presented signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Tellers come forward, please. All those in favor of Article 13, please up. Hold up your green cards to be counted. Keep them up until I tell you to put them down. Keep them up until I tell you to put them down. You can put your cards down. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. Motion passes. Vote was 160 to 4. 2/3s majority is met. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Clark.
I don't want the moment to pass. This was really a historic moment, and I just want to extend the Capital Outlet Committee's thanks to the Building Study Committee. Had our town had the foresight to do this 30 years ago, we wouldn't even be needing to be here tonight other than just to vote the mechanism in. And 30 years from now, 20 years from now, future town meetings are going to really appreciate what you guys came up with. So our sincere appreciation.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I don't want to let the time pass either. Mr. Purcell, you've handled the job of Caver Town Administrator on an interim basis very admirably. I very much appreciate your comments on the first article tonight. I think they represent a sea change for the way we've been dealt with here in Caver. And I really appreciate the job that you've done, the diligence and the honesty that you've brought to the job. And that is not a slam on anybody else. That's a credit to you. Being in that job can be thankless at times, we all know it. And I do appreciate the job you've done. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Last but not least, in the event that we do not see any of you in the very near future, a happy and safe holiday to you and your families. Thank you for being here tonight.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed?